Yeah, they invite people in like this morning. They had a woman, a nurse from Maine Med because you know, they're going through a unionization issue there.
Yeah.
And so that was quite interesting.
Folks, we're going live.
There's Lucy.
There's Lucy. You are muted.
My internet started working up, so that's good. Just intel.
Yeah. So, hey, Andy.
Yeah, Bill.
Sort of off the subject a little bit, but when can we reopen the elder care bottle collection up at the dump? Oh, I'm sorry. Transfer station.
We'll take it up at another meeting, I guess. I'm just, I'm trying to fumble through getting us going. We're live on Facebook now and just trying to get the last few folks in the meeting.
Oh dear, you mean I went to sleep on Facebook?
You did.
You're still muted.
I thought you were a good sport about it.
No, no, you guys are the good sports. I was totally embarrassed.
Yep, Phil was laughing, just so you know.
He was?
Hey, Bill.
Hi, Bill.
Hi, Phil. What in the world would you have to laugh about anyway?
Oh gosh, I have a whole list of things.
Okay, I'm gonna stop my video, so in case I fall asleep or anything, you won't be able to tell. I learned a new trick today.
Did we yell?
Sure. Yep. So Phil, your regular board of selectmen meeting is after this meeting?
That's right.
So we would be, it would be good if we could get through this budget meeting quickly, right?
Yeah, although, yeah, yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay.
Just waiting on Eric. I think Eric's trying to get into the room and then we can get going.
Did y'all see the Christmas cactus behind me?
Basically, yeah.
Anyway, this was from Betsy Bates. After she passed, she donated, her family donated to the library and we kept it alive for a while and then I kept watering it, you know, blossom well, and then it just has started to do it again over the past about two weeks. So, you know, I brought it out here just so people could see it. Anyway, beautiful. And that's from Betsy.
Yeah, it looks very healthy.
And I can tell, I can tell you, I can kill a house plant looking at it. So anyway, this is, all I've done is watered every week and a half to two weeks and
Wow.
It's living.
Phil, what was that plant that was blossoming? It used, had a picture of not too long ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
I can answer the phone, I'll be right back.
It didn't look like it was in your neighborhood.
You talking about me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, I'm trying to get this. I don't know how to get my camera on.
It is on.
It is on.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay. That looks like you.
Okay, you're just in the view where you are, this is the speaker.
Sorry, I just had a call.
Hi, Elaine.
Hi, Lucy. I'm trying to help Phil here where he is here.
I know, he needs it.
Phil, I think Eric's still working his way through the second in charge. You want to start the selectmen part of it? Call the order.
I think Eric might be on the wrong one because I was on the link you sent out today too. Did anyone tell him it's the other link?
Yeah, I just sent it another, again to him.
Hi, Eric.
Phil, do you want to call the selectmen order?
Okay, yeah, I called this board of selectmen meeting to order, or the budget committee meeting to order. And who do we have present? Jake?
Yes, I'm here.
And Donald?
I'm here.
And Pam? No, and Eric? No? Just the two of us for the time being. Do you want to take it over, Andy?
That's called.
Just let the record show Eric and D W are here as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Today, we're gonna try and go through library, Scott is with us, transfer station, public works, and Dan Bigford's in the room. Then the capital projects and reserve funds and debt service. Did shorten the meeting up to six o'clock. The selectmen will start at six. We'll try and end this at 10 of six, so there's a little bit of a break in between. Unless folks need it, we'll just work right through that five minute break we had before. Another quick review of, again, the strategic planning workshops that the selectmen went through a couple of years ago, over the last couple of years. Outlining a vision, some focus areas, and a mission, just trying to bring a little more clarity and, you know, to the work we're doing and being able to know that what we're working towards and share that with the community. Now, out of that, Matt Dublowski, our fellow, put together in a wide major, all of that information for us to kind of see in a succinct way. Major focus areas being economic development, infrastructure, community service, and fiscal responsibility, and then what we present to you through the departments and the work we're doing. You know, we're trying to make a point to make sure it lines up with those. So the goals worksheets we have for this year, I added a few more columns to try and help show where it lines up with those focus areas and values. Trying to add any estimated start times, estimated costs for those specific items we're trying to achieve. There's an estimated number of hours. We try to put that on there to give an idea of how much time it might take. And we're trying this other, you know, something new, which is adding these KPIs, a way to measure what it is we're working towards, you know, to show how we're doing throughout the year. That's something, again, that we're trying to build throughout the departments and we'll be doing so with this FY22 budget. With that, just circling the items that we're gonna go over today. Overall, you know, the transfer station as proposed would be down a little bit, fifteen thousand from last year. Public Works proposed to be up six thousand from last year, the reserve funds, forty nine thousand dollar increase from last year. Library relatively remains the same, up only seventeen hundred from last year, as presented, and the debt service payments in total increasing to forty six, by forty six thousand dollars from last year. So with that, Scott's ready. We can roll into his goals. He can walk through some of those with you.
Okay, so, you know, feel free to ask, you know, during this process. So during the next few years, we don't have a tremendous number of really high, you know, cost level issues that we're presenting, just projects that we're looking at that we may be able to use finances that we have and then also draw in finances from the friends of the library. So it's gonna be a combination of town and nonprofit. So the first is social media outreach. And what we're looking at this is basically, it's gonna be, this year, I'm hoping to have a combined trustees and friends of the library drive to gain extra, or as many new, new memberships as we can. So that's gonna be the second level. But in terms of the social media outreach, we want to use Zoom more than we have, certainly. Their friends of library has a new Facebook page and they also have a new website. And so we're gonna be making use of their outreach as well. So looking at this in terms of what we want to do for the town library is we still want to create or recreate our regular website. Right now, that's managed through Maine School Library Network and it's hosted there. And I just, today, I just forwarded something to Andy and they're working through a whole new set of procedures and whatever. So we may be having to deal with a bunch of stuff coming up soon, but, you know, hopefully, as soon as I hear more, I'll forward it to Andy and tech people. But in the meantime, rather than jump on and just redo the website immediately, we're going to try to build out of the town's library page. And so I have been working on an entire list of, of things that I'd like to see happen on that page and some may be, you know, well, they're all useful, but some may be more accessible and some may not be able to be, you know, realized. But I have a whole set of things that I would like to see happen. And then I've talked a little bit about this and I think that for this year, it's gonna be good to begin there and then work through to see what we want to do in terms of the larger regular website. And I've asked the trustees at our last meeting last fall to send me information and I've heard from one at this point. I want to hear from more. We're gonna have a meeting coming up soon and this needs to be a priority. But I think that between the town's library page and the friends Facebook and the friends website and the upcoming reboot of the town's library regular website, then I think we can reach out more, especially in terms of providing extra services, programs, what have you. The second is the new patron and membership drive. Like I mentioned, this is something that I really want to do because it's going to involve both trustees and friends of the library. I think for too long, there have been two separate groups, not necessarily knowing what the other group is doing, town included. And I think that this should be an opportunity to increase our, our membership and all of our, the uses of library from birth, you know, birth to death, basically. And I would like to see that happen with both groups working together. And that's gonna be a year-long project and our next trustees meeting, I'll present that to them. And then we have a friends meeting coming up on the twenty-something of the month, anyway. Where that will be able to be explained to them as well. But I just think that this is gonna be an opportunity, especially looking at key performance indicators to see where we are. Okay, you know, we're at this point and we can look at base level. And Linda has gone through and purged a lot of files that were outdated, people have passed away, no longer on the island, are you longer using their accounts. And so we can start at base level and look to see, okay, how do we increase use of the library? And you start, you know, when kids are born and when they get into school and you work your way up through the system and there are gonna be different techniques and programs that are gonna be useful for those different age levels. But that is gonna be probably the key focus for this year in terms of what I would like to see happen between the trustees, the friends, and the library itself. And strategic plan. I mean, I mentioned this last year and I said it was gonna begin and just because of COVID and everything, it hasn't. I have a lot of resources that I want to begin this. It won't begin until probably at least mid to late summer. It may be even the fall. I want to be able to provide a lot of time for this and engage as many community members as possible and have it laid out well in advance for jumping into this. But before this time next year, I'd like to have a full, you know, plan laid out. And I know the town is going through that as well, the select board. And certainly, I'd like to see this happen with us to lay out exactly, okay, where are we going? You know, I'd like to see a real, genuine direction for the library. I mean, I have my thoughts certainly, but they're not necessarily, you know, entirely agreed upon and I, we need to hear the community's thoughts and their needs and their wishes. So that's gonna be that next. Next on plan. Long-term budget plans, the children's and young adult services. Friends of library have been wonderful with this and they're gonna still take the lead. And, you know, I'm not a children's or young adult librarian. I'm a programming and adult services librarian in terms of where I'm, I'm in my desires in terms of how to lead a library. So it's wonderful that we have this other group willing to kind of take the lead on this, where I'm involved at every step. But they are really pushing and they've done a great job before COVID and they're ready to pick up as soon as we're able to and Sue Dempster's been doing some wonderful work with this and Colleen Collins. So anyway, that is a longer term plan. And then also, the second thing is the creation of an annual library publication. Probably most of you remember the journal Feast. And it was done in early nineties, I think. And I would like to see something done in a similar fashion for the library where each year, we do a theme-based set of programs for the entire year. This year, it's nature writing. It's actually gonna be a two-year plan. But it's gonna be nature writing. So I would like to see our journal produced each year with student writing, adult writing, photography, artwork, everything that will demonstrate community engagement with our theme in a way that will both be a elaborate publication, but also be something that we can be proud of in terms of, you know, what we produce for the community. And, and I'm certainly more than willing to have a lot of input on that. Right now, I'm just at the beginning phases of doing this, but I think it's gonna be, you know, there's a really good and exciting product each year that will demonstrate what people have taken away from each year's library programming. And hopefully, that will demonstrate that aspect of community engagement.
Did you, did you have some funds for that?
Not yet.
It's not in this budget?
Not in this budget. I mean, I've talked to a few people on the, on the friends board and they're, they're more than willing to be a part of this. So I think it's, in the end, it'll probably be a good way for both the town and the friends to cooperate like in the membership drive, but to cooperate and provide funds and then actually, you know, to have a, maybe a, an advising committee or board, you know, where you have both groups. And so at this point, I don't have any fund requests or information for that, but certainly that would be something, you know, this year, simply because of COVID, it's, it's gonna be a weird ride. But I'm hoping by next year. And I think the publication will follow the year, yearism programming. So it will be available the following year to demonstrate the engagement for the previous year.
Any other questions for Scott? Scott, do you have anything else to? Any other things you want to share or any other things to share? All right. Well, if there's no other questions, we can move on to the next one.
I have a question, Andy, on, on wages. Because they're up about ten, almost 10%. And I, and I can't figure out where that's coming from.
On the library?
Yeah. Well, fiscal year 20 was fifty-one, seven thirty-four, and it's now fifty-seven, six-ten, which is, you know, six thousand dollars on fifty thousand is, you know, over 10%.
So the difference between what's budgeted and what's spent, right? So the nineteen and twenty are obviously the actuals. You can see in twenty-one. So I think the difference there is there's been, you know, with some staff time that people have been out for various reasons. The last couple of years, we've budgeted summer help. And I don't think we've utilized that fully yet. Have we, Scott, in the last couple of years?
No, I'm aware of, no, no.
So there was, you know, I think that accounts for probably the majority of that 10% increase, if you will, from what was actually spent from what was budgeted. I think if you look back what was budgeted, it probably wasn't too, too far off from, too far off from where we are now, or probably close to where we are now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? Great. Scott, thank you again for hopping on with us.
Anyway, thank you very much. Take care.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Bill.
All right, well, Dan's with us, so I'll, I'll go back to transfer station and we'll go to public works right now. So just have up here, again, the overall goals that Dan, Dan's identified and that we've talked about. So Dan, if you want to kind of walk them through some of the goals that you were thinking about for the next year.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Dan.
I'd like to start with the top of the list, the lease on the excavator. Over the last year or so, we've done a lot of ditching, ditched almost between two and three miles. And I think an excavator, we've talked about this in the past, but I think an excavator would make the job a lot more efficient. One thing we are finding that we're finding a lot of ledge out cropping in the ditch line. And if we had a whole rim on that excavator, we could certainly improve the way the roads drain. So that's the main motive in trying to lease an excavator so we can do more work and be a better job. The next item on the, on the agenda is blasting ledge on the poor farm road. We've got three other roads pretty well in hand, the dirt roads that we started four or five years ago. We still got a little bit more blasting to do on Tiptoe Mountain Road. But the last road is poor farm road and I'd like to do that in this upcoming year. That will also improve drainage and the overall upkeep on the road would be improved. And the next one is create a road surface management plan. And our roads were built in piecemeal over the years. And there's a lot of different bases and we're not really sure what we've got underneath. It would almost make sense to hire an engineer to screen the roads and see what should be done to them to improve them. We've had asphalt people come out because they're trying to sell asphalt, so you're getting kind of a biased opinion on a lot of the input. If we had an independent look at it, we might get a more efficient viewpoint of the whole thing. The next item is, we've got a dump truck that's a two thousand one and eighty-five hundred. That's something that's got to be replaced in the next few years. We've also got a pickup truck. It's a two thousand twelve. It's got fifty odd thousand miles. And that's something else that we should be replacing soon. I've got on here a front-end loader. And if we have a new salt shed up, which we're supposed to, I guess, in May, for sand and salt, we'll need something to load that with, load the trucks with. Our backhoe, most likely on Main Street, so we're gonna be up at the new location, up at the Mills pit. So it'd be quite a job to run back and forth to load trucks and tend Main Street at the same time. If we release an excavator and kept it year-round, then we could load the trucks with an excavator. But I put that in there just in case we turn the excavator back at the end of the season. And we're still gonna have to address the issue of loading our trucks in the winter time.
Was that, this is Bill, was that calculated in the cost of moving up to the new location? Of having to have a new piece of equipment?
It was discussed, yes. It wasn't part of the bond question to construct or to renovate or build a new building. Yeah, it was discussed as part of the things to identify. You can either choose to keep the one loader we have downtown, borrow the one from public works during every snow event, or from transfer station, rather, during every snow event. Or, or look, you know, if we bring the, the public works one downtown, you're gonna have to find another tool, if you will, to clear Main Street because the backhoe is usually front and center on Main Street clearing. So, you know, we did discuss some of those things, the, you know, find trouble shooting, figure out.
As far as using the backhoe from the transfer station, I mean, that's all well and good, but a lot of times they have nails in the tires and, you know, it's, it's a maintenance issue, trying to keep that so we can shuttle it back and forth between the two locations. So.
Yeah, we borrowed it once and tire fell off and it cost twelve hundred dollars for repairs. We didn't even get to use it in the storm.
Right. I don't know, the next item, if we, if the discussion is over with our man, we'll move to the next item. The generator. I don't know what, maybe Andy can enlighten us on this a little bit, but I did put that in there because that's something that wasn't in the building plan is emergency power for the, for the new garage. And we should have something that would at least run the basics, you know, that we have up there to keep the lights on, the heat going. And, you know, the water going because it's gonna be an artesian well and sewer and all that. So we're gonna need something for a generator up there. And I don't know, maybe Andy can speak to that. But if there's gonna be enough money in the building fund to, at the end, to purchase something like that, I don't know.
Yeah, so the plans for the new building were scoped to include the generator hookup or the switch. In the event that we hook one up, we do currently have a generator. We don't believe it'll keep up with all of the power needs that the new building will have. But, you know, the very least, we are planning until it's a matter of, you know, if that project, you know, comes below the authorized amount, you know, it's something we can include. If not, it's something we'll have to buy separate to be able to power all the, all the needs up there if it powers out. You know, we do have a smaller one that we have onsite now in the, in the Main Street building, but the demand for power isn't gonna be the same in the new location, so.
Yeah, we're gonna need, I think the one that we currently own is only twenty-four hundred watts or something like that, or forty-five hundred, I think it is. And the new, new facility will at least be ten KW, so if not more, just to keep the emergency stuff going.
But can it be wired so that a, a smaller generator will, will keep at least a few lights on and the furnace running?
I think the transfer switch probably could be wired, you know, to do that, but you know, that would have to be provided for at the time when it's wired.
Well, that ought to be part of the planning. It is ridiculous to have to buy a great big generator when we have power outages that are, you know, like three or four hours maximum. And that's the way it's been for the last, I don't know, five or six years. Like, they aren't out very long. And so you don't really need a very big generator to keep things from freezing up. That's my two cents.
The next item is equipment and tools because where we are now, we have a lot of equipment and tools, but a lot of that stuff is worn out. It should be gone through. What we can use, we will use, but What we can use, we will use, but, uh, we are gonna need some new tools and equipment up there, so I've asked for five thousand dollars for that. And then I've also been getting a lot of people speaking about the vinyl cove issue, the, the flooding on the meadow. And, uh, I've done a little research on this and, and, uh, with a system of levees or a levy that will work with the tide, I think we could probably solve the flooding issue if we was to investigate that. But without some engineering, you know, we, we wouldn't be able to answer the questions on that, so I've requested money for that.
Danny, uh, excuse me, a levee's on which side of the bridge?
Well, it would be on probably the, the outward side, because, uh, you know, the, the tide would have to come and go. But if they had some way to slow that flow down with either a, a float switch or something like that, we could control the level inside of the meadow, so it wouldn't flood the road.
Yeah, that was Del Whit's, uh, suggestion too. I think it's a good one.
Mm-hmm. And the last item on here is key performance indicators. And that's something new that we're trying to put into place. Uh, we've got what, a software called Publex that we're using now. And that has provisions in it so that we can create a lot of key performance indicators, and I think we can work that in to an overall plan to report, uh, either weekly or monthly or whatever, on how we're progressing as far as job performance and, and road surfaces and, and all that kind of stuff. So I guess that just about covers the shop term stuff.
Uh, Dan, I had a question, and that is on that, uh, leasing an excavator. Is that something you would lease from somebody on the island or off-island?
Probably an equipment dealer, I imagine, of some type.
But aren't, aren't there a number of pretty good-sized excavators already on the island?
Well, we don't want a, a huge excavator. We probably would need something around fifteen thousand pounds or eighteen thousand pounds. Um, I'm not sure just what's available on the island, or even what shape they're in. But if we lease one, at least, you know, we would be sure what we're getting.
Well, yeah, but there might be a way to, to lease something, uh, as, uh, from, from somebody on the island that's willing to lea- lease their equipment, but say not full-time, but only as neat, you know, have it when it's needed. And then turn it back over, uh, so that person can either use it or not use it, or make it, do it for a four-month lease, something like that. But not after all the trucking. I think it'll be worth looking into. There seem to be a lot, I look around, there are a lot of medium-sized excavators around. I mean, Luke has two of them now.
Well, it's certainly something we, we could check into.
Great.
I haven't got anything else. Uh, Andy, if you've got anything you wanted to add to?
Uh, just in the longer-term goal section down below, um, trying to put in there the, the equipment we currently have. Um, they either replace and then the year that it is, um, and then the column, the start timeline start. I tried to use that to kind of foreshadow, you know, when we're estimating having to replace that piece of equipment by. Some of that's been on the list for a couple of years, just to give you, you know, the outlook, say, hey, it's coming up. And, you know, the two for not the FY twenty-two budget, where our hope is to get one more winner. Um, out of the eighty-five hundred, that two thousand and one eighty-five hundred in the pickup truck. So both of those would be looking to come out of the, you know, looking to have those before the winter of twenty-twenty-two, but then be a fiscal year twenty-three if all things line up right. Um, and we can get one more year out of both of those. Um, some of the other ones are a few years beyond that, um, but just as a heads up, you know, trying to give you that. You can see it now.
Are all these items in the short term, are they included in this year's budget or are they for after that?
All the short-term items, are they for this fiscal year or for the one after? What I can see on the next page, the increase is only sixty-two hundred dollars. And, I mean, just the truck alone is a hundred and fifty K. You got another fifty-five for, like, pickup trucks, I'm just wondering. Right, so the, the, the truck cost would be something we'd likely loan. It's just kind of give you an idea, like, these are the items we want to try and see get done. It'll be, I think those costs are gonna be, the ledge blasting is something that's usually, um, incorporated in the road repair line.
Yep.
Um, so in a different place of the budget. Um, and then the engineering report, I believe we have, we're including that in the professional services engineering line. Uh, so say, some of those are, are taken out of there. It's just, you know, trying to give you an idea. So those, no, those wouldn't line up with the projected number that you see there necessarily. It was all what Dan was seeing Public Works wanting to accomplish over the next year or two.
Okay.
Just, just trying to tie it back. Thank you.
On the pickup truck, have we had any, you know, major repairs or anything, or things break on it that we've had to pay for?
Uh, we got one right now. It's got some front-end suspension needs. Um, outside of that, I don't think it's anything that's not considered routine maintenance, if you will, for a almost ten-year-old truck.
Yeah, we're pretty lucky with it.
It's got just under sixty thousand miles or somewhere between fifty and sixty thousand on it. Um, it is a, it is built for, you know, to be a BP work, you know, pickup truck. Uh, so it is able to, you know, keep up with what we need it for, for the most part. Um, but yes, it does have, um, it's in the garage right now for front-end work.
Probably helped too that I stopped driving it and hitting things with it too, so.
All right, on the numbers page, um, for the overview of that, you see that as proposed, um, up six thousand or just over, or almost one, almost one and a half percent. Um, and no, no real big changes, um, from last year. Um, we're hoping to get a little more, little more use out of the salt and sand line, where it'll be stored undercover and won't be going out wet and clumped. Um, you know, I mean, you know, hopefully we'll see a big difference in the quality that gets put out. Um, the wage line's down just for the accounting for overtime. Um, we haven't hit that in the last couple of years or come close to it, so I did, um, you know, try to be a little more conservative on the overtime amounts in the seasonal work, you know, that summer, that winter seasonal work. It is really hard to try and guess what kind of winter we're gonna have.
You know, it's all just on the weather.
And I think this year we had one month of winter, really, uh, you know, weather anyways, so, uh, hopefully it stays that way. Uh, but it does make it really hard to try and guess, you know. The other thing we've had in the last couple of years is a lot more mild winter, so it's a lot more ice, uh, which has used a lot more sand, um, so that line hasn't decreased, um, in use in the last few years. Uh, but it is something that we're trying to keep an eye on, and hopefully with the new building, we'll at least have a better product to put out on the road.
What kind of surplus do you think we're gonna have this year, since we've been one of the last two years at least?
Uh, I mean, the wages line, I haven't tried to project what we're, I wouldn't even try and guess right now. I haven't tried to project right where, you know, what we might spend the rest of the year. I know the salt and sand line's gonna be pretty close to a hundred percent if we did buy a hundred.
We bought a hundred yards.
Under a hundred and twenty more yards this year.
We should get, unless we get some unfacade, then we shouldn't be able to finish the season.
Right. Yeah. I mean, we might be in the ballpark of thirty, you know, maybe, but it's just, I haven't tried to run that yet. Any other questions for Dan while he's here? We, you know, um, we did, we do have some offsetting revenue for that, um, for the vehicle excise tax. Uh, when you register your vehicles, um, that does bring in a, a fair amount of money. Um, you know, the selectmen are, are generally fairly conservative, not knowing what's gonna come in up to eighteen months in advance for that. Um, but the last few years, it's been over three hundred thousand dollars, um, pretty, pretty regularly. Um, you see there in twenty nineteen, we've had three hundred and forty-seven thousand in revenue. Um, for this year's budget, utilized two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, through December, we were already at two hundred, so, um, fair to assume we're gonna be over three hundred thousand again, um, for FY twenty-one. Um, so proposing to increase that to three hundred thousand next year. Um, and so all, all of that money offsets the operating budget for, for here, so.
Are we, I see it zero on the, I have two questions, zero on the cold patch fill, but I see some cold patch happening, so I wonder about that. And then also, um, I know there was sort of a schedule for the, for the non-surfaced, for the, for the dirt roads, and I'm just wondering how that's going and, uh, for the upkeep of those.
So the, the cold patch expenditure last, this, for FY twenty-one, that's in the road repair line, because it, it just makes more sense when you're trying to do road repair. We had some stone and some other material under road repair, but not the cold patch. We'll do the same thing. Um, so, um, that's actually an expense that comes out of the road repair line now. Um, and oh, uh, work planned for, for the road, so I think that's hopefully something we have covered in the road repair line as well.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions? Um, I can shift over to the, while Dan is here, the road repair line to talk about that and then kind of go back from there.
Yeah, I had a question, and that is, um, I'm worried about having to replace that grader, even though, even though it's, you know, ten years out, because that's a hugely expensive piece of equipment that, that doesn't seem to be used, uh, twelve months of the year, certainly. And so I'm wondering, are, do we keep an hour meter on that to find out how much it's actually being used?
Yeah, we, we, we have an hour meter on the, on the machine and we record that every time it's feeding.
So any, do you have any, or idea how much that is a year, uh, Dan?
I don't. I'd have to look that up.
Yeah, and the, the other thing is, I mean, I don't know if those things are available to, to lease, but that may, might make a lot of sense by the time we have to buy that, you know, three hundred thousand dollar machine or whatever it is by then. Uh, and the other thing is, I was just wondering, is, are, are we doing less grading on the gravel roads now because you've done such a good job, uh, shaping them and crowning them? Is that, you know, reduced maintenance overall, do you think?
Yeah, we, we try to do maintenance twice a year now. And, uh, with the calcium chloride ceiling, uh, it, it extends the life of the surface of the road.
Did you get that, Bill?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the calcium fluoride makes a huge difference. You know, we just started doing that, uh, regularly, what, within the last three years.
Yeah.
Was, uh, you know, actually one of the bigger reasons why we put that poly sand that's in the pickup truck. Um, you know, so we can actually spread it. Um, I think that makes a really big difference, and so it, it, it has cut down the, the grading, I think, quite a bit. There are obviously still roads that need some spot, spot grades that we can back drag with the backhoe at the time, but.
And the, and the drainage improvement too, also, the fact that we've got crowning the road and and it improved the ditching and blasted a lot of the ditches and it all helps.
Yeah, well, I'm just, I think it's, that's a, that's a hu- hugely expensive piece of equipment. Um, that doesn't get, you know, a, a lot, it doesn't seem to be used a lot, and of course, it's gonna be less and less as the roads are improved and some are, other than have been tarred.
But also, you know, replacing it, you may not need as big a machine, but, um, very handy in the wintertime. At times when you have a real big storm, that's the only thing that's fit to go up the North Haven Road and keep it open for, get up to the power station. Um, same way if you lose a truck, um, you have another thing you can plow with, so it does play an important part of the strategy in fighting the storms in the wintertime.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, uh, so the Lucy's question, um, I did try to throw in, I started this last year, trying to, um, update it for this year. I might not have gotten all of them, but, um, kind of tried to give an overview of all the equipment we have. Um, and then on the right-hand side, uh, roads, stage and gravel, um, br- major bridges, or bridges and major culverts. Um, those are ones that are, um, generally inspected by the state. Um, the harbor infrastructure, which has a fairly substantial list, and sidewalks, which isn't complete, but, um, at least trying to note some of the sections that, you know, the board wants to see get done. Um, so Lucy, I don't know if seeing that, if that's helpful, if you have questions based on that, or if there's some things missing that we can try and include in there for the next meeting.
Andy, is that in there?
No.
Okay. Can you send that?
No, I, it's fine. I just wanted feedback, because I knew you were working on this project, if you felt it was helpful to have it mapped out like this and a, more efficient for the road crew.
Yeah, I think, you know, the work planning, you know, and we'll talk more as we shift over to road repair, but yeah, trying to come up with a, a good work plan going into it, you know, and trying to, you know, decide whether it's something we can do in-house or whether we need to coordinate contractors, either on or off-island, you know, it's gonna be huge to get, you know, get a better system in place so, so we can follow through on it. You know, it is a line item that we haven't been able to spend all of what we appropriated the last couple of years. Um, you know, it's not for a lack of not needing to do the work, it's just a lack of being able to pull it all together. Um, you know, and there's a lot of moving pieces in that, like, for example, the, the, um, the blasting company. You know, there's a pretty good lead time to get them to come out. There's a lot to coordinate with excavators and, and people running excavators and dump trucks, and so, you know, if we can get a better, a better handle on, kind of, you know, planning these ahead of time, um, hopefully we can get these into motion and just see, you know, it's a big lift to get some of these done, because it's been years and years and, you know, decades, actually, deferred maintenance in some cases. Um, and so it is, it does become a capital project, so hopefully we can get over some of these, you know, the hurdle with some of these, it does become a more manageable system where you can just crown the road and just kind of, you know, every few years, clean out the ditch line instead of waiting for thirty or forty in some cases.
So, so the four million for Main Street, is that because it's so complicated with the bridges and the flow of water or?
Uh, so the Main Street, um, it's, I got it there twice, under sidewalks and roads, so it's actually just the, the estimated cost for the downtown master plan project. Um, so it's, it's road, it's drainage, it's sidewalk, all the way from the ferry boat to the, um, the bottom of the net factory hill. Um, you know, this, you know, all going through there, so I mean, it's a lot, you know, the drainage, I think everyone knows the, you get a moderate rainfall now and you've got at least two ponds on Main Street, one in front of the store and one in front of the bank, so the drainage that was created many years ago, um, just the pipes just stopped in the grout bank in a lot of places, and so, you know, there's no more outfall, it's not reaching the, the harbor as fast as it needs to. And, you know, so it's, that's the estimated cost to do all of that work, um, through that corridor. Um, the good news is we're hopeful, um, that we can get grant funded for, in the best-case scenario, three-quarters of it, so. Um, and we have, we have cash, you know, but in the reserves right now to be able to match that, so we're trying to, trying to get those, gave, sent off um, of an EBA, um, grant recently, um, and that's gonna be a big one if we can get that, and then there'll be another one we'll be working on for the third year in a row, um, for, it's called Northern Borders. And we'll try to get that one as well, so I mean, there's a lot to try and coordinate with those and timing. And we do for sure have one grant from the state, um, for up to six hundred and, I think, twenty-five thousand. We're matching that, so we're, we're working towards it, and if we can get all those to line up, we can, you know, the calendar, the work timeline would kind of begin, um, probably sometime in twenty twenty, really twenty twenty-two. Any other questions on some of this stuff? Is it's?
Just a question on the spreadsheet. Is the X in the box for the year? That's when you hope to replace it?
Yep, okay. All right. So the road repair is up, it's the only, I think the only one under this section that is up, if I remember right. All right, you just skip through if you don't, you don't, sorry. You put it in there. So you're all Dan's here, I can, and he covered some of the big ones. I guess I don't want to get too far into, you know, that one item there, so trying to kind of root, you know, kind of cover a general overview of these, but while Dan is here, um, you know, just quickly, you know, some of the things that were, you know, to account for the increase, you know, includes the equipment rental, which wasn't in- you know, includes the equipment rental, which wasn't included in the public works budget, obviously, if, if the idea of renting an excavator is considered. We've got a lot of guardrails that are not adequate, or need to be replaced, or installed in some places new. And that, you know, that's a big number that we had last year, need to continue that. The gravel road surface maintenance, it's, it's not always just as simple as grating alcohol. Sometimes we need to add the material, and even with the calcium chloride, you know, we're still talking upwards of an inch of surface that needs to be replaced every year. And it should be accounting for that before that becomes a capital project. And you try to have four to six inches on your surface that you drive on. And if you go every year without replacing that, then eventually you're going to be in your sub-basin. And we have that in some places. And so making sure there's money to be able to put that towards that, so we're not trying to replace all four or six inches at once. That is a big chunk of it. I think that was the big one. Trying to get on a plan, we've had it earmarked the last couple of years, but trying to do a more substantial job with roadside tree trimming. And, you know, that again is something that, you know, we're in some places in our right of ways. And it's been a long time, and, and that growth, you know, trees just, they grow, and you know, we think for a couple, you know, two, maybe three years hard at it, you would be able to knock down some of the big ones, and then it becomes a lot more manageable. You know, think about the work that was done, leaving out through Brown Pond on this past year by the electric company. Not, you know, their right of way is a lot wider than ours in some places, but, you know, being able to keep it, the, the road open, the water chance to get off, the sun trying to get through. I mean, it'll be a big help for a lot of reasons to keep that road in good, good shape, so. There any, but, you know, do we have any questions on the road repair parts while Dan's here? And we can go over that in more detail at another meeting with the budget committee if you want, to get a chance to look at that and digest that a little bit, based off of Dan's proposed work plan and what you're seeing. All right, well, Dan, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thanks, Dan, have a good evening.
You too. All right, go back to the transfer station. So the, the, there's a great group of folks working with the committee, the Waste Watchers Group, and so it's a combination of things they've identified, and a combination of things that Kenny's identified to me. A waste study is something that I know that they were trying to look into to get a better, better idea. You know, if we want to improve recycling, if we want to, you know, listen to composting and have a sense of, you know, how much waste could we divert, you know, from the solid, solid waste streams, of paying the tens of thousands of dollars to move waste off island? Is there a way to divert it, you know, and process it here, you know, stuff like that, organic material? So they'd like to see a way to do a waste study, or an audit of our waste stream, to get a better sense of how much we might divert. We talked about replacing the sticker system with bags. And that's something that if we don't do before summer, we'd look probably to do, I assume, right after summer. Try to time it with, we just bought stickers at some point this, this past year. But try, I think, I think we've got five or six rolls, which is about, I think, 1,000 stickers each. So try and time it with that, you know, and then there'll be a little bit, there'll have to be a little bit of overlap when we make that switch. Obviously, some people do buy in bulk, but just trying to line that up right with that. But at that point, you know, acknowledging that the costs always go up, you know, we aren't at 50%, you know, of the cost to get rid of the waste. I'd try to put in there this, this proposed year's estimated cost to remove waste from the island at just over 250,000. So if that's the number, you know, if that's the number we're trying to reach, the cost to get rid of the waste, you know, put some numbers in there to think about as a proposal. With the bag system, you know, when we switch to the bags, if that's something that you can think about a little bit, and start to figure out if that's the number, if you still want to hit that as your, as your benchmark, or if you want to look at it in a different way. The trash compactor is something that's been on the list to replace. We have a reserve fund for that. And I believe there's enough in there, if not already, then with this year's appropriation to be able to replace that. Eric might recall, I think that was 2002, 2003, and that would have been put in?
I, yeah, it was.
Right after the landfill was capped, I mean, that's the original, that's the first one, I believe, that, that we, that we had, so it's.
It was after I left, and I left in 2000.
So it's, it's, it's nearing its time, it doesn't owe us anything at this point. And fortunately, it does seem to still push a good load, but we don't, it needs to, needs to be replaced. And the thought is, we could do that after the, the wall replacement, we can get it to go through then. I'll cover for the demo container, you know, finding a way to cover that at night, or at least during the rain and the snow. It doesn't make sense to pay for water weight when it goes to the, to the, to the scales. So if there's a way to somehow keep water out of that container, you know, the same would go for the solid waste one. And we can modify that slightly, but I think we have a plan to try and do that when we replace the compactor. And then, just like I threw in, after talking with a few other places, some places do compact the demo loads. You know, with the demo, it's kind of a, you go for the quantity, or you go for the weight. And some of that stuff, if it can be compacted, we're trying to do it now with the backhoe bucket. And, you know, and it works to an extent. There's no proposed cost or solution right now, but just something to be thinking about if we want to try and find a way to make that load, you know, more worthwhile. I have it on in the detail pages, but I, I think, you know, to compare it, the solid waste, I think, averages about 13 or 13 and a half tons per trip. Whereas the demo container, same 40-yard, I think it's the same size container. You know, one's fully enclosed, and the other one's open top. But the demo, I think, averages about eight, seven to eight tons of load. You know, part of that might just be, that is what it is, because it's bulkier stuff. But I think getting the water out of it, or keeping the water out of it, and, you know, thinking about ways to compact it better would be lower our, our overall per-trip cost. And not for this year, or next year, we're hoping to get at least three more out of it, three to five years out of it, but the skids here, at some point, just to put it on the radar, you'll need to be considered. It has, has some issues with the muffler this year, I think Kenny's been able to fix, but just to throw that on the radar to be, make you aware of that. Any questions on the, or feedback, or things you'd like to see us do on the goal side of the transfer station? All right, the, on the number side, you can see the, the fees collected the last few years, last two years, you know, it's almost identical, you know, within two grand, 166, 168,000 respectively in the last few years. I'm expecting a similar number for this year, so I don't think we're going to quite get to the 200,000 we were estimating for budgeting for. You know, for next year, again, if we consider some, an increase, if we want to hit that closer to that 250, again, the cost to remove waste, we will have to change the fees to get closer to that. Overall, a decrease in the budget from last year of 15,000, so estimated total proposed this year at 412, 945. Some, most of that decrease has just accounted for the waste costs, you know, trying to estimate how many trips we're going to have, you know, a year out, you know, just trying to go based on averages, you know, at least a five-year period. Just tightening up some of those. We did have some, I think, some efficiencies in getting rid of metal. The company we're using, Thomasville Recycling, the way they've been doing it, we get quite a bit more for the cost for their service. And so they bring out those open container, 40-yard containers, and they make a pretty big dent pretty quick. But that will keep that cost down a little bit. Other than that, are there any questions on, on what we're trying to accomplish there?
When would the new prices for solid waste, demo waste go into effect if we did change them?
Yeah, I mean, you can wait for the bag if you want, or you can do it beforehand. It's up to the board, or kind of when you want to do it. I mean, generally, if you're going to try and do it, you'd want to do it before summer, to capture the highest use.
Right.
You know, the, the use through winter is obviously a lot less. In the summertime, there's a truck leaving the island, coming and going close to five days a week, in some cases, six, with, with weekend traffic. You know, this time of year, you might have two or three on average a week. You know, so if you're going to do it, and, and actually, you know, realize that, you'd want to do it right before summer.
Like June 1st?
Or July?
Does it really pick up July, or have you seen?
July and August is a big one. And you've got some of those shoulder seasons where more construction's going on, the demo container, and the burn pile, the solid waste, which is your biggest volume.
Is there a way, is there a way to, to, to do the dump like the ferry rates are, so that we can capture more in the summer and less in the winter? Like go up to $3 a bag in the summer, and $2 a bag the rest of the year? Has that been thought of?
Yeah, it's possible, I'm just trying to think, you know, you know, where would that price difference be? And so, you know, we know the price on the ferry boat goes up in the summer now, that is not something that has happened for a while. So because there's a higher cost to get rid of it in the summertime, you could look at it that way, and, and we'll think of doing that.
Yeah, I think it's something we should explore, makes sense to me.
I think, yeah.
I think it needs to go up regardless, but I think, I think that, that's a good idea. Why not, if it costs less in the winter, you might as well drop the cost in the middle of the way, so.
Yeah, another thing to think about too, is the, the ability to account for stuff coming, you know, in there. I mean, at times, we've all been up there when it's real busy. It, it is not designed well to be able to have two people be able to see everything coming and going all the time.
Right.
And there is a lot, whether we acknowledge it or not, that goes on after hours.
Yep.
You know, up there volunteering with the, one of the roadside cleanups this past winter, it was incredible how much was up there. I mean, there's, you know, times where, look, after two days off, coming in the solid waste hoppers almost full. At least half-full. You know, so there's a lot, and again, they might have stickers on them, they might not, but once they're in there, I mean, I don't, we're not going to send someone in to verify.
No, I'm not asking them to do that either.
You know, and that's where, you know, a bag system, my color, colored bag, you know, mustn't be easier to at least spot something that's not already paid for, and then you might be able to go back on a camera and see who it is. You know, in terms of, you know, bringing it up, because, you know, we are also considering the wall replacement. At the last board meeting, we talked about that a little bit, and there's more to consider, but, you know, do we consider changing the layout to try and make it a little more efficient, a little easier for the staff up there to be able to say, okay, you're coming in, you know, kind of more of a one-at-a-time entry, to be able to review things. And so that's another thing to think about too, is, you know, there's other ways to make that more secure, so there isn't stuff going in off-hours, do we need to expand the hours? There's more of a need to be available, you know, thinking about that, the money not captured because we aren't there to get it.
Right.
But you still allow people keys to get in businesses and stuff after hours? So could that be part of the fill-up over the weekend, that those businesses are coming in?
It's possible, I, I wouldn't know. My understanding is it's mostly, mostly for the burn pile demo type stuff. I don't, but yeah, that's a possibility. And I think, you know, they try to work with the folks that it's a limited number that have them, and they know who has them, and they can at least go back on the camera, and a lot of times, and see, and most of them are pretty good about writing down that have the keys. But it is a much, very much relying on the trust to have someone let us know what they put in there. Any other thoughts, questions, feedback, you can follow up on with the transfer station? All right. Back to the reserve lines again, so it's a combination of active, you know, working lines, a good road repair. And the rest of them are generally more of a reserve fund, set aside for future expenses. We heard from Mark earlier about the fire trucks and the equipment there. Same appropriation there to consider at 25,000. Public Works Equipment or Vehicle and Equipment Reserve, asking for the same there. Roads capital, that, that's the offsetting money you see down below on revenue, that money that the state sends every town for every state aid mile of road they have. It's a certain amount of money that goes towards that maintenance, with the cost of paving. We generally, you know, put it in the bank, if you will, and save it for a future project. Historic sites, continuing to fund that, there's a list of projects that we'll talk about in a future meeting to consider to be able to spend that on, but, you know, continuing to fund that in a way that will support those projects to be identified. Harbor Reserve, that's one you might have seen on that sheet, that had kind of like a schedule of capital projects and equipment. And there was a fair amount of items for the harbor, you know, floats, and pilings, and boat launches. And the thought is that, you know, we'd be able to have an amount of money to match a ship grant in the future, to be able to say, replace the boat launches, and do the, the piling work at the fish plant here. And I think we're, I'm hoping, we don't have a preliminary number or estimate to do those three things, but, you know, based on what I was estimating it might be, I think we're close of having that match. You know, so we'd be able to go after those ship funds, hopefully, anytime we need them at this point, and hope we can get them. I think that one pays for close to 50% of the cost, up to a certain amount. Any questions on any of these bigger items, based on what we've had so far?
On the, on the road repair? So for last year, we budgeted 190, and we have actuals year-to-date of only 50, almost 15,000, is that correct?
Yes, through December.
Is that substantially more since December, or?
I don't know if it's substantially more, I haven't run, I don't have a number for what it is through today, or through recently. But I can get that and see.
Because if, if we have a significant surplus, do we really need to increase it by another 40,000?
Right. Well, that's, that's the point of the work plan, needing to get better work planning in place, so that, you know, we're, we know going into the year, instead of waiting for the year to start.
Right.
We go into the year knowing, okay, we're doing these, we need to sub out these, you know, put these things kind of out to bid in a, in a more efficient manner. In, in the summertime, we look for fall work or spring work. And then we know we can commit to doing that. So I think it's a matter of not having a good handle on the work plan needs, not for a lack of road repair needs.
Right.
And it's just being better about timing it, and putting it, you know, following through and getting the work done. You know, you know, our department's not built for a lot of the capital projects, the ones that are going to take, you know, I, I try to work with Dan to say, any pro, any one project is probably going to take more than, say, two to three weeks. You know, we might want to consider subbing out, because we've got to continue on the routine stuff. You know, we don't want to get, you know, lost in, you know, a good example is, you know, some of the major gravel road projects we did a few years back. You know, we did, we worked on one road for almost two full summers. You know, so we, we deferred a lot of maintenance needs, and it couldn't get to some of those things that we have to do. So we need to be a little more mindful of the things that we're built to do, can do. Supplement that maybe at times, work with the contractors if we can, but, you know, be able to work in two directions at the same time, and, you know, having the money to be able to do that. And it is a lot to consider, especially given that we hadn't hit the number for this year in the last three years. But, you know, hopeful that we have a better work plan going into FY22, and can see some, a lot of that gets spent, see the improvements done. All right, here's a, we're waiting on audit to be completed for FY20. I think they're in the home stretch. But these are the numbers going back to the last audit, what was appropriated for FY20, what was appropriated for this current fiscal year, and, you know, an estimated balance through December of this past year, for all the reserve funds we have. The way the audit breaks it down, there's, there's non-expendable permanent funds, like the cemetery trust and salvage trust, the restricted funds, the TIP agreement, we've talked about that before, it's very narrow in how that can be used. And then those committed funds, that, those are your more traditional reserve funds, as we, as we fund them in the budget that we just talked about. So those are the estimated balances for those pending the audit for FY20. To mention the road and sidewalk, and that money there earmarked to match the grant funds for the Main Street project. The harbor reserve, as I mentioned, it's hopeful that it's after the, the match, that amount that we might need. If we don't need that much, that'd be even better, but, you know, without an engineering or an estimate on, on those projects, it's, I don't. And, you know, without an engineering or an estimate on, on those projects, it's, I don't know what, what to expect. I'm, I'm. I'm estimating about five hundred thousand to be able to do both boat launches and the. The piling work at the fish plant, but that's only based on not having a boat launch done recently and what we paid for the last parking lot project. And plus, plus on the grocery store. But I think we should feel comfortable that we do have matching funds to be able to put towards that infrastructure. I haven't heard back from the state about the Blains Island Bridge. It's not in their two or three year work plan. And that you can see online. So I, I did ask about that. We still have to replace the, and improve that guardrail. And so we do have some money there for that. And just kind of waiting on the state to let us know what they're doing. The equipment reserve for public works isn't, you know, I didn't subtract the. The money spent to the backhoe. And that fund is depleted. And. After we purchased that and we'll continue to hopefully fund that to grow that back again. That was a good example of, you know, there was a, a good deal, you know, it was in our. Short term plan to replace anyways, a, a good deal and a used one came through. And, you know, we had the ability to be able to buy it when it, when it was available. But the board did also talk about the fact that it would utilize all the funds we had. I think some other big ones. There's a couple of grants in there that we've been awarded that show a balance in there. The police cruiser, we have started to fund for that, reserve fund for that. That's money that. As of now anyways, the contract doesn't have the, upset the burden of supplying that vehicle. And so that's fifteen thousand that could be. And that town meeting reappropriated either the fund balance or to another purpose. And unless you want to keep it in there for a potential future police cruiser. And but I assume you might want to consider reappropriating that at the town meeting.
Yeah.
Now, other than that, any questions on any of these?
Once they finish the audit, can you send us an updated spreadsheet? Thank you.
Where are we on? Where are we on the public works garage? Budget?
Yeah. In, in terms of the progress, the, the work completed?
Yeah.
So the, moving along good, the, the main building's being renovated. And the interior walls, the building's entirely insulated, I believe, at this point. And they added an additional eight inches of insulation to the roof. And the roof and the ceiling, interior and exterior, put a new roof on it. And all the interior walls for all the, all the rooms, the break room, the, the workshop space, the office, all that's been framed in, it's being sheet rock now. And electrical's been roughed in. Garage doors are ordered and need to get here and they'll be able to put those in. And they're hoping to be done still at the end, by the end of April.
Yeah. And where are we with, within the budget?
As I know, we signed a contract for the, the design bill for the garage to, I think, I think it was seven hundred and sixty thousand roughly to be able to do the renovations for the garage. And. I don't think we've had any major change orders since we started it. So it, that looks like it's on. In line with what we expected. And I think when we set out on that project for that in the, in the salt sand shed, I think it was about a fifty thousand dollar. Window for change orders. So hopefully, hopefully there's not, no surprises here going in the home stretch.
Great. So it's not being used at this point by the public works department?
Not yet. Hopefully we can start doing.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So the debt service, um, the increase there is just realizing the first full year of, of payment on the, the three projects. And I guess the twenty nineteen paving and then the two projects that are ongoing, the garage facility and the carrying place bridge. You see, we released the payment of the, the twenty fifteen plow truck. And I think by now, I think that one has been paid as of now. And I think that one came due in January. But if we don't have that, this was the last year to pay that one off. Any other questions on? That? If I have it all, that's all we had to cover today. Any questions on what we've gone through so far? Again, tentatively, you know, just preliminarily going through the Ohio overview. And budget committee members think about, you know, for, you know, roughly the next month. And my hope is that the, the select board will have your proposal. And by April, second week in April. And that'll give them, them time to review your, your proposal or your, your proposed numbers. And and have time to finalize a warrant before the end of April. All right. Well, if there's no questions, we'll look to budget committee members to get together and find out when you want to meet over the next few weeks, if that works. Perfect. And for the board, select board members, and anyone else interested, we'll just take a break and come back at six. For the select board members, like there is a different link for, sorry if that was confusing, a different link for the selectman meeting tonight. But we can take a break here and come back at six if that works. Perfect. Phil or Eric want to end the selectments?
You're muted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm a weird girl. Seconded by Phil Crossman. Eric asked, when he votes yes. Phil Crossman?
Yes.
Jake Thompson? He said yes. Usually people are happy when I'm muted.
Thanks, everybody.
Committee's going to stay on. We can think of dates.
Yeah, if you want to do that, we can do that.
That's a good idea.
I'm getting out of here.